This is the January 8, 2020, meeting of the Planning Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to this evening's agenda, I would like to introduce our new board member, Tina Paris. Congratulations and welcome, Tina.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number one, 2012-04, Storbit Homes in Wisconsin; number two, 2012-02, Carlson Associates in Kings Park; number three, 2010-06, KBC Holdings; and under waiver requests, number four, 773 Scholar States in Comac.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in any of the matters that were just recommended to be recessed? Hearing none, I move that we recess items one through four as read. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So recessed. Tonight's hearing is for comments from the public on the draft environmental impact statement for the preliminary subdivision Gyrodine LLC St. James. There will be no vote tonight. The DEIS is on the Smithtown Town website for your review. The public comment period will end on January 24, 2020. You are all invited, and you can send comments on the website. So if you have any comments to make, please go onto the Town website, and it's very easy, and make your comments there if you'd like. Is there anyone here representing the applicant? Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Madam Chairwoman, before these proceedings start, I would just like to make an announcement that I will be recusing myself from any action on this matter to prevent any apparent conflict of interest that I may have with the applicant. So I would like the record to duly note that at the time of the vote, as a member of this Planning Board, I will be recusing myself. Thank you.
Before we begin... The affidavit posting has been submitted.
Mr. Shea?
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board. Jay Timothy Shea Jr. from Sir Tilman Ballin, 100 Motor Parkway, Hop Dog, New York, representing the applicant. Joined here tonight by John Cameron and Kevin McAndrew of Cameron Engineering, who will also be speaking. As indicated, we are here mainly to listen to the comments from the public related to the draft environmental impact study supplied to and accepted by the Board pursuant to the scoping which was previously done. Although we are here mostly to listen, we do want to provide a very brief presentation to describe the overall approach to the study and to address some specific aspects of the DEIS and to clear up some of the issues that have been raised. First, from an overall perspective, we want the Board and the public to know that Gyrodine has been located at its current location for over 60 years, and its operations are governed by a Board of Directors, many of whom live within the vicinity of the site. Throughout the process, the Board has stressed the need to balance its fiduciary duties to its shareholders and the company with the need to be cognizant of the neighborhood they live in and cherish. In furtherance of the same, and to better control the overall development of the site, we came in with specific alternatives limited much greater than would be allowed under the existing zoning. These alternatives were designed to balance the potential impacts to the community and providing the community with a clear expectation of what the development scheme will probably look like. Gyrodine limited the potential development schemes to the ones studied in the DEIS. I would further like to remind the Board that although the subdivision references studies in creation of up to nine lots in the alternatives, we are only really proposing three new lots using only 25 acres or developing 25 acres of the 75-acre parcel. The nine lots include, or up to nine lots depending on which development scheme we're looking at, include the existing Flower Fields Celebration Center, the existing Gyrodine Industrial Office Park. Each of the alternatives present little physical change to those developed areas other than upgrading of the site conditions and establishing of new lot lines. The alternative studies studied revolve around design of the site, with potential users being an assisted living facility, office space/R&amp;D, and a hotel. Each alternative was designed to balance and account for traffic, groundwater, aesthetic, and other impacts of the subdivision. I'll now hand the presentation over to Mr. Cameron and Mr. McAndrew, and we look forward to hearing from the public on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Kevin McAndrew, Partner with Cameron Engineering, 177 Crossways Park Drive, Woodbury, New York, Engineers, Planners, and Landscape Architects for Gyrodine. As Mr. Shea expressed, we have a brief PowerPoint presentation, six slides. I will take you through the first five slides. John Cameron, Managing Partner with Cameron Engineering, will take you through the sixth and final slide. The first several slides that I'll take you to will expand upon Mr. Shea's opening remarks outlining the approach to the draft environmental impact statement referred to typically as DEIS. The remaining slides are going to focus on the specific and relevant engineering, environmental, and planning details associated with this mixed-use subdivision application. The three-volume DEIS is a science-based and engineering-based document with many progressive and advanced environmental, ecological, and engineering solutions that are integral to the mixed-use subdivision plan. The DEIS document includes comprehensive chapters. They range from subject matters on soils, groundwater, flora and fauna, traffic, to visual resources. Most distinctive is what Mr. Shea just referenced, and that is the extensive analysis of 10 alternative plans within the DEIS. This is an approach that far exceeds traditional DEIS in terms of quantity, scope, and level of detail. The analysis of these alternative plans includes engineering drawings, modeling analysis, as well as comparative and cumulative impact analysis. The purpose of including the extensive amount of 10 alternative plans is to demonstrate that varying combinations of preferred land uses can be built in a sustainable manner while minimizing impacts and providing a multitude of benefits. I want to just briefly further clarify what Mr. Shea referenced when he said that the property is not developed in 75 acres, it's really 25 acres. As Mr. Shea stated, the property today is improved with Flower Field Caterers, approximately 13 acres. It's improved with the original Gyrodine buildings, approximately 13 acres. Each of the mixed-use plans that are studied in this document propose a commonly-owned parcel, approximately 24 acres, that's primarily comprised of open space, the internal road, and the acre and a half dedicated to the STP. That leaves a remaining 25 acres of undeveloped property, which is the specific focus of that. And as Mr. Shea stated, we're talking about three to five undeveloped lots that are the focus of this build-out. The planning and engineering approach associated with this application would be referred to as a conservation subdivision. The mixed-use subdivision plan does not seek to maximize density or build-out. It represents a sustainable approach that would result in far less intense development than is permissible under the as-of-right zoning plan. This is both with regard to the number of parcels that could be created, as well as the overall density of the application. Each of the plans studied in this DEIS, that includes the 10 alternatives, exclusive of the as-of-right light industrial plan, includes over 30 acres of open space, over more than 40 percent. That translates to more than 40 percent of this property being set aside as open space. A key fundamental detail for this mixed-use plan is utilizing what's referred to as established development thresholds, resulting in significantly mitigating potential environmental impacts and effectively regulating the total build-out. And what that means is that key development thresholds, as they relate to traffic, this proposal sets a limit on maximum trips to be generated at the full build-out, as well as the total sanitary flow, which in effect regulates the intensity and the development associated with this property. The land uses that are studied within the DEIS are not arbitrary. Going back many years, Gyrodine invested in a significant market research that supported the proposed and studied land uses, office, medical office, R&amp;D, hotel, and assisted living. Validating the market research that was done by Gyrodine is the Benchmark Senior Living Update. Benchmark is a regionally-recognized leader in providing the highest-quality assisted living communities. Benchmark has recently entered into a contract of sale with Gyrodine for approximately 10 acres. That's 10 acres of the 25 undeveloped acres that I just previously referenced, a significant piece of that. The market study was further advanced, where an economic and fiscal impact study shows significant economic benefits. I'll just highlight a couple. The project at build-out would generate over $3.5 million in net new annual property taxes. At full build-out, this proposed project is estimated to generate approximately $90 million in direct economic output on an annual basis, with hundreds of high-quality jobs generated. Noteworthy is that this proposed mixed-use development will result in no increase to school enrollment and minimal public resources expended with regard to infrastructure. All of the roads, the drainage, the water supply, the sanitary, the open space, there's a number of amenities which I'll touch upon. All of these, all of this infrastructure, will be privately owned, maintained by a property owners' association. I'm going to repeat to this Board what I said when I presented the initial application two years ago. The concern for traffic is entirely understood. Cameron Engineering has studied the traffic on the surrounding road network here for the last 15 years. Our traffic impact study validated that concern for traffic. There are longstanding issues that warrant traffic mitigation around the Gyrodine property. Gyrodine is proposing to address these longstanding traffic issues in a sustainable approach, and it starts with the distinct benefits of a mixed-use plan where reduced trip generation is realized by offsetting land uses that have different peak times of operation and a mix of land uses that generate different intensities of trips. The assisted-living land use is an ideal example of this. It's one of the lowest-intensity land uses as far as trip generation. The assisted-living land use will be a substantial portion of the new development on this property. The traffic impact study spells out a set of off-site mitigation measures. This off-site mitigation has been coordinated with both the Town and New York State DOT. It includes the key intersections of Stony Brook Road and 25A, Mills Pond Road, 25A, as well as four other intersections in the immediate area. Noteworthy is that the proposed mitigation that the traffic impact study identifies for Stony Brook Road, both of those intersections have recently been completed as far as the mitigation that was outlined. The work was performed by the Town of Brookhaven. It's the intersection of Stony Brook Road and South Drive. That's the main intersection into the university from Stony Brook roadside, as well as the intersection of Stony Brook Road and Oxhead Road. Regarding an update on the intersection of Stony Brook Road and 25A, Cameron Engineering recently met with New York State DOT staff right before the holidays. The state confirmed that they are currently evaluating two design options for this intersection, and the state has a projected build year of 2023 for improvements to the intersection of Stony Brook Road and 25A. By regulating the mixed-use development with a limit to new vehicle trips, the extent of the physical change required to implement the off-site mitigation is minimized, preserving the historic right-of-way while effectively managing the traffic associated with the mixed-use development. I've spoken to the fact that each of the alternative plans would preserve a minimum of 30 acres, more than 40 percent of the overall 75 acres. I just want to provide a couple more pieces of clarification to that. Much of that area, most importantly, is adjacent to 25A. There'll be an expansive buffer, a minimum of 200-foot in width along the entire frontage of 25A. It's over a half a mile, preserving this historic rural roadscape, preserving all of the mature trees, with the exception of the limited right-in, right-out driveway that will provide access to this development about the midpoint of the frontage on 25A. There's going to be over 330 indigenous species trees that will be strategically planted within this buffer along 25A, again, further augmenting this to provide visual screening from this roadscape into the property. There'll be two miles of walking-in-nature trails within the open space on this property, open to the public. There will be permanent bicycle lanes, part of the internal road network that tie to the external routes. There is an extensive green infrastructure component that Gyrodine is committed to with this development. Stormwater management will be designed in an ecological manner, where there'll be extensive use of roadside bile swales, vegetated detention, and rain gardens. All of this has been coordinated with the Town and endorsed specifically with New York State DEC. There'll be a proposed integrated pest management, an IPM program, approach to the long-term management of the landscape on the property. Groundwater recharge, stormwater, and wastewater, all a major focus of the proposed green infrastructure design. John Cameron will address our final slide as it relates further to the issue of water quality.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening. My name is John Cameron. I am the founder and managing partner of Cameron Engineering and Associates. Due to some misinformation that's been circulating in the community regarding the wastewater treatment and nitrogen discharge issues surrounding the Gyrodine project, I believe it important that I publicly state some of my qualifications to lend some credence to some of the statements I'm going to make here this evening. Firstly, I'm a licensed professional engineer with an undergraduate degree in marine engineering and a master's degree in marine and environmental science. I have over 40 years of experience in the design, construction, and operation of wastewater treatment facilities, including regulatory oversight of such plants, as well as 10 years of instruction of treatment plant operators in New York State DEC-certified courses. I've been actively involved in professional and environmental organizations throughout my career, including having served as the president of the New York State Water and Environment Association, as well as state vice chairman of the New York League Conservation Voters. Both my firm and I personally have received numerous awards for our professional and environmental achievements. One of the pro bono positions I hold is the chairman of the Long Island Regional Planning Council, which for the past three years has been co-managing with the New York State DEC, the Long Island Nitrogen Action Plan. I am intimately involved with the management of that program on a daily basis. What I'd like to convey tonight is the potential environmental benefit of this project, in that the present method of discharging wastewater through onsite septic systems, much like I would assume most of your homes, will with the development of this property now be upgraded to be treated in an advanced wastewater treatment facility, which will reduce nitrogen levels by 80 to 90 percent compared with the current onsite septic systems, which have a negligible impact upon nitrogen. In fact, as the graph which you'll see up there on the west side of the room, as the graph depicts, the future nitrogen loading from the proposed development, which you'll see to the right there in the green bar, will be approximately 70 percent less than the as-of-right development, which is the bar in the center of the graph, which would not necessitate a treatment plant, but would actually be less than the current development on the property today, which is the blue graph to the left, the blue bar, excuse me, since, again, the nitrogen essentially is not abated in the current onsite septic system. There has also been some discussion regarding how many years it would take for the discharge from the site to reach Stony Brook Harbor. And as much as the nitrogen loading would be less with a developed property, the short amount of time it actually takes to reach the harbor, the quicker the improvement to the harbor will actually be. Another issue which has been discussed in the media is the Town of Smithtown's potential interest in having the St. James Business District sewed and connected to the proposed Gyrodine wastewater treatment plant for treatment. In the event that such a sewer district is established, and the Town is desirous of such a connection, under this development plan, Gyrodine would have the capacity to treat such wastewater onsite and would be willing to discuss such a relationship with the Town. In closing, I'd like to state that at the outset of this project, the Gyrodine Board and executive team gave a clear mandate to the Cameron team to formulate a development plan that responds to the opportunities in delivering transformative benefits through the implementation of a smart, responsible, and sustainable development plan. The development plan should be sensitive to the distinctive attributes of the property, including its physical landscape, road frontage of approximately a half a mile along Route 25A, a historic corridor, the Washington Spy Trail, Gyrodine's history, and a plan recognizing the opportunity to respond to community and regional needs. The DEIS document details how and why this project will deliver on that mandate. We look forward to hearing the comments, questions, and concerns of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This meeting is being recorded. If anyone would like to comment, please speak into the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Keep your comments to the draft environmental impact statement only, and please be brief and do not repeat comments made by previous speakers. Right now, I would like to welcome Town of Brookhaven Supervisor, Mr. Ed Romain, to comment on this matter.
I'd like to thank this Board for giving me an opportunity. I'm not a resident of Smithtown. I'm the supervisor of the adjoining town, Town of Brookhaven, which the entire boundary, eastern boundary, of this project sits. But to give me an opportunity to speak, I appreciate it. I have long remarks. I printed it out. I'm going to try to abbreviate them. We have a great number of speakers, and I try to keep this as brief as I possibly can. I'm here because this project will impact the communities of northeastern Brookhaven in a far-reaching and possibly devastating way. When this proposal was first put forward, I submitted extensive comments regarding the scope of the environmental impact statement. To date, I have not been contacted regarding any of these concerns, nor have any of these changes been made to the plan reflecting these important issues, let alone, this alone would make DEIS flawed under the existing rules that SEQA has created. This 75-acre project will undoubtedly be the largest development in the Smithtown area, the Smithtown-Brookhaven area, for the next generation. It is taking place directly on the border of my town, within 300 feet of the Stony Brook Historic District, and dependent on the infrastructure of Brookhaven Town. I was interested to hear people talk about Stony Brook Road. It's in my town. No one ever talked to me about it. No one ever talked to me about it. Think about that. Put yourself in my place. It's going to affect our groundwater, and yet there was absolutely no outreach by the developer or his consultants to address the concerns that I presented this Board. I had a representative come and give you written comments, and we sent another letter in expressing our concerns. I know they're talking about a hotel, and under certain circumstances, that might make sense, but consider this: we have the Three Village Inn, the Hilton Gardens at Stony Brook, which by the way is planning an 85-room expansion. We have the Stony Brook Holiday Inn Express and Danforth's, and now I understand there may be a hotel on the Wisconsin Highway where the watermill caterers sit. That obviously is going to put this industry under a little stress. The EIS contemplates road improvements within the Town of Brookhaven and contemplates a grade-level crossing of the Long Island Railroad that would feed traffic for this project directly into Brookhaven Town and its roadways. Despite that, we have not been contacted. We know what this will do. You know. You live here, like many of these residents. 25A is over its carrying capacity. Stony Brook Road is over its carrying capacity, and we're going to add more. I'm concerned about the harbor, which is unique, which our towns share, and Stony Brook Creek, which our towns share. I'm concerned about the impact of a sewer treatment plant, which is addressed in the DEIS, sewer treatment plant for this facility. What has not been addressed in this facility is the impact of a regional sewage treatment plant, and what that impact would be on groundwater, on the harbor, on the creek, and that's something that should be looked at. Coordination of any planning project, and you, most of all, as members of the Planning Board, understand, with your villagers and with your adjoining town, should be undertaken. There should be discussions with the MTA, because the railroad runs right through this project. There should be discussions with the State University, and it has been very little. In fact, we spoke to the State University earlier today to confirm the lack of consultation on this project. The density of the proposed development, the planned construction of a regional, regional, I want to emphasize that, sewage treatment plant, appears to be directly in contrast to the low-density zoning of the Village of the Head of the Harbor, and the Village of Nessaw Quag, and the Avalon Park, which have enacted low-density zoning to preserve the local waterways. I would hate to see this Gyrodine proposal undermine the efforts, long-term efforts, to protect natural resources, simply because they have a zoning classification based on a World War II manufacturing that has ceased to exist many years ago. It is my belief that in Suffolk County's sub watershed plan and the United States Environmental Protection Agency's Long Island Sound Study, both of these support the need to decrease the density associated with water quality on this 75-acre parcel. Based on the existing zoning, as of right development, could generate 7,000 new vehicles per day. Consider... new vehicles per day, considering, considering, excuse me, considerably more than the proposed DEIS addressed. These are concerns for me. I am definitely concerned about Stony Brook Road, which is overdeveloped at this point, has too much traffic. I'm concerned that the legacy of this development will be diminished water quality and traffic jams, and people will say, why? Why did this happen? How did this happen? Well, tonight, we're at ground zero. We're with the people that make the decisions, the people who serve this board because they are concerned with the future of Smithtown, as I am with the future of Brookhaven. You have to make a decision about some of these things. Let me talk about some of the things. I know they talked about open space. By the way, getting back to traffic congestion, my strong suggestion is that there be a traffic study in conjunction with Stony Brook University to ensure that the employees and students can safely access the university and that emergency services can adequately serve the area, particularly Stony Brook Hospital. We also need that study to take a look at local road improvements that should be taken to minimize additional traffic congestion created. We're at a tipping point. We are at a tipping point at Twenty-five A. Ask anyone that has to drive from Stony Brook to Smithtown. And I asked one of my attorneys, whose husband does that. She said, it's worse and worse. Can't make it. Depending on the time of day, a trip that should take fifteen minutes can take forty-five minutes, and probably more. And these people can probably speak, can speak to the truth of that issue. So you can hear all, you know, there's facts, there's more facts, and then you know what proceeds after that, okay? And that's what we have to think about, the common sense of this. Right now, they talk about open space. They talk that thirty-six point five acres or forty-eight point seven percent of the site will be open space. That's not accurate. Think about that. I'll tell you why. No one element of the open space plan that was presented actually preserves open space on the site. Open space is defined as undeveloped, free from residential, commercial, industrial, or institutional use, something that provides scenic beauty, cultural value, historic significance, production of food and forest products, outdoor recreation, protection of or restoration of ecological functions, wildlife diversity, and habitat for endangered plants and animal species, and mitigations of natural hazards such as flooding. The open space is not a hundred forty-one land bank parking stalls with the potential to be opened in the future and paved over with asphalt, nor is it the leaching fields that you're going to use for the sewage treatment plant. That's not open space. And if you define that as open space... So you can have engineers, you can have consultants, you can have everyone presenting, but that's not the fact of what open space represents. I'll try to do it quickly. I know that we have seen alternatives presented, and as you know, the title of this DEIS is a map of flower field subdivision application. Every single alternative that has been presented is the exact same subdivision. The only thing that changes in the alternatives is the mix of use. That's not a subdivision alternative. What the applicant has provided here is a sub, excuse me, site plan alternatives in the DEIS. That does not meet that standard. That does not meet the standard of providing alternatives. The STP location is where? Right on the boundary of Brookhaven, right next to single-family homes. That doesn't make good planning. That makes planning where you put two absolutely different type of zoning together, where you put an industrial use such as a regional sewage treatment plant next to single-family homes. That doesn't make sense. I know this property is interesting, and I have to commend the people who own this property, but I think the state university was buying it for about twenty-five million dollars. They wound up paying a hundred sixty-seven and a half million dollars for two hundred forty-five acres. So let me say to the owners, you obviously know how to cut a deal or get the maximum money out of this, but we're not talking about a deal now. We're talking about the shape of our community. We're talking about a community where we live and what we want it to look like and what we think it's going to be after this is built in the future, where our traffic is going to be, what is the impacts to our groundwater. Those type of things are the type of things that we're talking about. And one of the things that DEIS should address today, today above all days, is climate change. And I looked for it, and I didn't find it in the DEIS. So clearly, I would have liked to have my town consulted more. We were not. I would have liked to have seen some of the issues addressed by the developer and his engineers, who were so interesting in presenting their view, to address the questions we raised months ago, years ago, when we sent written correspondence. They were not. Until those questions are addressed, we will not be in favor of this project, and we will consider all options regarding this, particularly whether all the requirements of SEQA was met. I thank you for your attention, and I appreciate the difficult job you have. Thank you very much.
We are going to take comments from the rest of the audience. Remember that this meeting is being recorded, and please, when you come up, please state your name and address into the microphone for the record, and also, there is a sign and sheet right there next to the podium on that table. Can you please print your name and address so that the stenographer can clarify that when she does the minutes? And so now, if anybody else would like to be heard in this matter?
Let's take one at a time in an orderly manner, and we'll let ladies go first. How's that?
Please, after you state your name and address, please sign your name.
My name is Maria Hoffman. I'm here to represent Assemblyman Steve Engelbreit, who's in Albany today and wishes he could be here.
Sign now.
Good evening, members of the Smithtown Planning Board. I'm here representing Assemblyman Steve Engelbreit. He's a member of the New York State Assembly, representing the fourth district, which directly adjoins the proposed project area. As a neighbor, he wishes to emphasize that Smithtown and Brookhaven share New York State Route 25A, Stony Brook Harbor, and a remarkable sense of overlapping cultural heritage and environmental resources. Unfortunately, the proposal before you at this time from Gyrodine LLC would, if approved, significantly impact the quality of our life, the quality of life of our shared neighborhoods and area. I'd like to articulate some defects in the DEIS as I see it. The density and detail of what is proposed is profoundly incongruous with our area. The subject property is served by roadways that are wholly inadequate to the proposed intensity of development and use. New York State Route 25A, Stony Brook Road, and Mills Pond Road are the only streets that access the Gyrodine property, and they were each designed and built for less intensive use than has been imposed upon them already by the surrounding suburban and institutional development. Stony Brook Road, for example, is already so oversubscribed that at certain times of the day, cars trying to travel it crawl bumper to bumper in a traffic quagmire. And that Stony Brook Road and the much smaller Mill Ponds Road are the only, are the only near north-south travel routes that could access the Gyrodine site. It is clear that the significant new traffic that would be created by the proposed overdevelopment would create a Midtown Manhattan-like traffic nightmare on each of these roads and within the residential neighborhoods that they run through in both Smithtown and Brookhaven Town. Similarly, New York State Route 25A is already overcapacity, already at overcapacity. Inevitably, the proposed project would further compromise the predictable, safe, and efficient passage on this arterial that directly links together Smithtown, St. James, Head of the Harbor, and Old Stony Brook. However, our communities share more than just a roadway. The agrarian landscape and historic scenic vistas within which Gyrodine is situated are our communities, excuse me, is situated, connects our community residents to their history and heritage. These locally and nationally significant sites and landscapes attract tourists who appreciate the beauty and cultural significance as well as patronize our local merchants while visiting. Tourism is Long Island's number-one industry in any out-of-context approval of this proposed project that will erode the aesthetic and cultural appeal of our shared historic corridor that includes the National Register of Historic Places, such, including Deep Wells, St. James' General Store, the William Sidney Mount House, and the Stony Brook Chris Mill is short-sighted in the extreme. The DEIS does not adequately address the negative impact that the proposed project will have upon these historic and conservation-based resources. Similarly, there are other concerns relating to neighboring townships, including the reality that every elected official who represents the northwest corner of Brookhaven Town is opposed to the Gyrodine's massive proposal due to its outsized impacts on our intermunicipal transportation network, Stony Brook Harbor, and our shared historical and cultural character. And although this is a regional-scale project, and the quality of life of Brookhaven residents would be impacted by the project, the DEIS does not speak to or take a hard look at regional impacts. Also of great concern is the absence of the collective impact from proximal development proposals, including the Bull Run Farm property on Mill Ponds Road and its proposed build-out into an assisted-living facility, the International Bible Church property on Route 25A, West Stony Brook Road, and its contract Bendy, who intends to build housing, and the uncertainty of the future of the BB and GG farm. What we need is a comprehensive environmental impact statement rather than the fragmented parcel-by-parcel approach as evidenced in this site-limited DEIS. Other shortcomings of the DEIS include the project's growth inducing cumulative impacts upon Stony Brook Harbor. Questions such as, will the onsite plant become a regional sewer district? And what specific type of sewer system will be purchased and installed? And will it predictably remove nitrate? And what is the specific anticipated time travel of sewer effluent to the harbor? It should also be noted that unlike any other North Shore Harbor, New York State owns the bottom of Stony Brook Harbor. This almost nine hundred acres of state ownership is a public trust that the Gyrodine project and its sewer effluent must not be allowed to violate. What will be done to protect the water chemistry of the harbor? These and other related meaningful unanswered questions need to be answered and resolved before the project is allowed, as proposed, to seal the fate of Stony Brook Harbor. Similarly, and in a larger sense, the Gyrodine project as proposed must not be allowed to negatively impact the quality of life of our two towns. In its present form, I'm strongly opposed to this project. I urge you to reject the present DEIS as submitted, and ask that you require and pursue with Brookhaven Town a cumulative impact statement that would adequately address the collective regional impact of all the nearby projects, including but not limited to the Gyrodine proposal before you this evening, and that are now being simultaneously contemplated or advanced within both towns. Thank you for your consideration. Signed, Assemblyman Steve Engelbreit. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Murdocko, and I'm here to give my comments on the draft environmental impact statement for the proposed subdivision, the seventy-five-acre Gyrodine property.
We have your draft.
Yes. Grab Apple Lane, Comac, New York. For those of you who do not know me, I write on land use and real estate development issues. My award-winning published work is regularly seen in publications such as Newsday, The New York Daily News, Crane's New York Business, The Real Deal, and my site, thefoggiestidea.org. I also teach graduate-level courses on economic development and urban planning. As part of its work, The Foggiest Idea regularly reviews the policy actions taken by local, state, and federal governments that impact communities throughout Nassau and Suffolk Counties. Being that Gyrodine is one of the last large tracts of developable land in western Suffolk County, any development at this particular site is regionally significant. In my formally submitted remarks to the planning board earlier this week, which are available both online and has been published by local media outlets, I noted that the DEIS is an extensive document, but outsized concerns remain unaddressed by the draft, including the impacts to neighboring municipalities and on local watersheds. Tonight, I'd like to focus on two distinct elements, one, comprehensive impacts, and two, intermunicipal relations between the towns of Brookhaven and Smithtown. In recent years, local governments have been isolating the discourse around proposals of regional significance. In Huntington, policymakers found their concerns regarding Heartland Town Square unaddressed by their neighbors in Islip. Smithtown must not follow Islip's example by failing to listen to Brookhaven's concerns. In the coming years, intermunicipal cooperation will help determine our regional successes. Moving forward, I urge policymakers in both towns to work with the Gyrodine Company in crafting a proposal that meets our region's collective goals of environmental and economic sustainability. Development actions on our island are not isolated, for they resonate far beyond municipal borders. As such, the comprehensive impact of any development effort at Gyrodine in relation to other proposed projects must be more fully understood. Given the infrastructural and environmental limitations that exist around the parcel in question, the DEIS fails to give us a comprehensive understanding of the regional implications of the applicant's proposal. In closing, I'm confident that all interested parties can come together to craft a vision that works for these seventy-five acres. As I argued on the pages of Newsday in 2018, quote, "Long Island's municipalities must stop pursuing patchwork economic development strategies and come together to properly chart the region's future." Thank you.
My name is Kirk Crowley. I reside at forty-nine Quaker Path, Stony Brook, with my wife. Ladies and gentlemen of the Smithtown Planning Commission, I stand before you and the rest of these good people here, as a concerned homeowner, I have no association with any affiliation with any group or anything like that. I stand before you as a homeowner, and I have no doubt in my mind that while there is great diligence done by the engineering team and your group, I stand before you concerned that if this project goes forward, my property values go down, all right? There's absolutely no doubt about it in my mind, all right? And so, I spent twenty years, my wife and I, building a property, living in peace, investing in our community, and I'm deeply concerned that it does not seem to be that there is collaboration between Smithtown and Brookhaven in something that is right on the border between our two municipalities. Now, if you Google Map Gyrodine to the center of St. James, St. James Post Office, it's one point eight miles. If you Google Map it, Gyrodine to Stony Brook Post Office, it's two miles. So it seems to me this proposal is opportunistic based on available property, but you're placing a sewage treatment plant equidistant, smack dab, in between the two centers of two beautiful towns, and I can't help but wonder if there's been enough diligence about the sewage treatment plant, the runoff, the, all of the impacts that are going to... plant, the runoff, all of the impacts that are going to happen so close to these municipalities' downtown centers, all right? So, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak here, and I know that there's been a lot of people talking about traffic, which is also a concern of mine, but I won't speak about that. I just know that this is going to adversely affect me and my family, and I urge you, urge you, to rethink this proposal. Thank you.
I'm a Smithtown resident, Nine Atres Drive, Kings Park, New York. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. I'm also representative for the Audubon Society, and I'm a half-century resident of Smithtown. I'm a product of the Smithtown School District, and I have resided the past 27 years in Kings Park. I'm chapter president for the Four Harbors Audubon Society into which territory Gyrodyne falls. Additionally, I sit on the Board Council of New York State, and I'm an ecosystem specialist and a consultant for Audubon New York. Lately, I seem to be speaking out quite a bit on the last few large parcels of our Long Island open spaces. I'm not going to say that the site should not be developed. I am going to say that if the site is developed, the planning of the development must be considered extremely carefully. This is one of the last remaining large open spaces in Smithtown, and its zoning was put into place before the area was so heavily developed, and our waterways, groundwater, soil, and open spaces were put under so much pressure to continue functioning properly with dwindling environmental resources. We are running out of open spaces. Open spaces does not mean people's yards, parking lots, farmlands, which is not really good for wildlife habitat. Open spaces are functioning ecosystems which provide habitat and environmental services that most of us so rarely think about, like clean air, clean water, food, and other things that we can't do without. The last remaining true open spaces are necessary and should be developed with care. We are reaching a number of tipping points with soil, water, and our ecosystems and wildlife. As for the Gyrodyne property, 41% of the existing site is already developed. The plan allows for 51% of the total area to be developed, with 49% left as open space. This leaves only an additional 10% currently available to be developed. In looking at the proposed site plan, it certainly appears that less than 49% is designed true open space. In order for open space to be most viable for habitat services, it needs to be contiguous or connected. In the plan, the open space is not contiguous. It's fragmented. This is not conducive to wildlife and biodiversity. In the report, landbank parking, landscaping, and lawn are considered open space. Landbank parking in the calculation of open space should not be considered as landbank parking can be opened and built upon in the future. In addition, landscapes and lawn are fertilizer and irrigation-dependent and are not functioning ecosystems. Non-native ornamental plantings do not provide biodiversity. They are managed landscapes, and they cannot be counted as open space. They are not a habitat for wildlife and diversity. In one area, the proposed plan shows a doubling of the amount of lawn from 6% to 12%. The study also states that there's going to be a 4% increase in nitrogen load. This may not sound like a lot, but with the doubling of managed turf, which takes both fertilizer and water, it may become an environmental issue as Long Island North Shore is approaching a nitrogen load tipping point. Basically, what this means is if we have any more nitrogen in our water, we will get even more algal blooms than we already have, which suck up the oxygen in the water and cause our marine life to die because they can't breathe. I love clams on the half shell. As a little girl, we used to go out clamming, and I used to take the boat out and dig as many clams as we wanted. And we had water quality issues in the Smithtown Boat Basin and Stony Brook Harbor, and the town closed the shellfish beds. We're finally allowed to dig clams again. As a resident, I really don't want to lose clamming. As addition to the green and brown algal blooms, we call them brown tides, which would only kill the marine life, there's also the possibility of serious human health issues because of the possibility of blue-green or red algal blooms, also known as red tides. We already have water issues in Stony Brook Harbor and Smithtown Bay with E. coli and hypoxia, which is a scientific term for oxygen depletion in the water. Adding more nitrogen to this is not useful. The bad thing about most usable forms of nitrogen is that they don't stick to soil particles, they actually push away from them, and unless a plant's roots are there and ready to use them, the nitrogen compounds push down through the soil and move through the water table and add into the waterways and the Long Island Sound. Lawns have very shallow root systems, which don't have much time to uptake nitrogen before it flows deeper into the soils. The lawns, if they're going to be maintained, should just have grass clippings put back down on them and not have any additional nitrogen or any kind of fertilizer put on them, as the plan states. The fertilizer's not necessary. Adding 4% more nitrogen to the harbor is significant. The DEIS is encyclopedic but not analytic. The applicant must analyze these impacts and their repercussions and ramifications before proceeding with this plan. Speaking against nitrogen in open space, the proposed leaching field around the STP is also not open space. It's an area that will be disturbed to build a leaching field and then covered with lawn. Again, lawn is not a viable ecosystem. It's actually the least productive of land usage because there is little wildlife able to use it, and it also helps very little with flood control, unlike native grasses and forbs, which have deep root systems to help channel groundwater down from parking lots, roads, and improved land. In addition to the sewage treatment plants effluvia, the medical buildings and assisted living facilities will contain pharmaceuticals and chemicals. A sewage treatment plan would eliminate some but not all of these contaminants, which will cause additional environmental impacts to Stony Brook Harbor. A bio swell would be a better solution than a leaching field for the STP, as the native plant roots would uptake chemicals and water in addition to nitrogen as a natural filtration system instead of allowing the water to flow out from the shallow-rooted lawns to Stony Brook Harbor and other embayments and estuaries north of the property. In addition, the STP should be relocated to a more western end of the property. We'd heard this before. It is currently cited where the effluvia for the plant would reach Stony Brook Harbor within 10 to 25 years. By moving it west, the water would be estimated to reach the harbor in 25 to 50 years. By adding bio swells, it can be hoped that the water issues will be even further mitigated. Office buildings or less biohazardous buildings should be considered in place of the medical assisted living facilities, as geriatric care and medical facilities generate many more chemicals in addition to the effluvia than the average office building does. As for the birds, which is what Audubon is actually known for, the language in the DEIS states that eastern meadowlarks and kestrels are onsite, and it's inconsistent with the lack of healthy functioning native areas provided. These birds need large contiguous areas, and the areas provided onsite are insufficient. Assuming that these grassland birds are still present, what is the mitigation measures for the loss of this habitat? If the project is to move forward, the lot should be configured to provide 50% of uninterrupted, contiguous, meaningful, protected, open space that is separate from the developed area, and invasive species on the property, especially in the buffer area, should be mitigated. When I say mitigated, I don't mean that it should be removed to let new invasives grow in their place. It means a considered plan to remove invasive species and replant with native vegetation, and also a three-year monitoring plan so that the invasive plants do not reinvest the area. There is also no plan in place for sustainable power sources to help offset climate issues. Solar panels over the parking lots should be considered. The possibility of geothermal and/or wind turbines might also be considered. Bird-friendly building design and elements should be used on the medical buildings if they're to be put in, and the assisted living facilities, and any other buildings. Also, this site has a history of soil contamination. I don't know if anybody has assessed the potential as a superfund site. Since this is a proposal, Four Harbors Audubon will be pleased to offer assistance in the continued development of the plan for the Gyrodyne site. And now, I'm going to go back to being a resident. I drive these roads frequently. The roads surrounding Gyrodyne site are considered a historic corridor comprised of North Country Road, New York State Route 25A Heritage Trail, and the Mills Pond Road. Historically, the Washington Spy Trail ran along 25A. In addition, our narrow-winding two-lane roads are not equipped to handle the increased traffic flow. I don't know how many of you use the ferry to Bridgeport. I do all the time, and sometimes getting there with time to spare is a real challenge. With increased traffic, it will be even more difficult to gauge what time I would have to leave to catch a boat. That should only take 20 minutes for me to reach with normal traffic. 25A is what I would consider at or above capacity for the kind of road that it is. However, improving it would destroy both the historic and the intrinsic character of the less-developed areas. Sometimes, more is not better. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman.
Excuse me, one second. We want to try to get to everybody, and we don't want to set a time limit on how long you can talk. But please, we don't need to hear the same subject 100 times, and please police yourself at the mic. We'd like to get everybody to speak. All right? Thank you.
Someone removed the sign and key.
They were passing it around.
They were passing it around to make it faster.
And also, please always address the board. It's important that you address the board with your comments. Thank you.
I promise I will respect that.
Thank you very much.
My name is Natalie Weinstein, and I have lived in St. James for over 40 years. In 1985, my husband and I purchased two properties: one on Lake Avenue and one around the corner. One I knew to be the old Calderon Theater, and the other I later discovered was the location where the first silent movies were shown. Our home was nestled in the woods of Nissiquag. We shopped at the Waldbaum's in Smithtown, pumpkin-picked at The Giant Witch, and walked our two little boys on Lake Avenue. There was a Suffolk store, among others shoe stores, and even an ice cream parlor and luncheonette. I know that for a fact because it was in our building at 455 Lake Avenue. They are all gone now. When my husband passed away in 2010, I decided to move my design firm out of the Calderon Theater and onto our Lake Avenue location. Now, I actually saw the visible deterioration of our downtown. Stores were empty. Absentee landlords were raising rents as businesses opened and closed. Cars were whizzing by with very little to stop for, and a vape shop and massage parlors found a home. Those who stayed and invested in St. James looked to the then-supervisor for help in revitalizing the town. His answer was always the same: I'm not raising the taxes. Without sewers, the business district will have to manage, and people can shop at the Then something wonderful happened. A new supervisor was elected, a civic association was born, and the organization of which I am the president, Celebrate St. James Past, Present, Future, was founded. People had had enough. While our hamlet was woefully short on infrastructure, it still had the community pride generations of families who lived here and loved St. James had nurtured. Along with that old spirit came something new: progress. Roads were getting fixed. Parks were being upgraded. A master plan was finally being developed for the Smithtown communities based on our input. The town officials were actually listening to us: homeowners, business owners, families, seniors. Along with the town officials, St. James found a new friend and neighbor at Gyrodyne. The Gyrodyne Corporation, whose board has many St. Jamesers on it, has spent years developing their plan, taking into account existing environmental and traffic issues as well as the profile of our small-town community. They have consistently exhibited the good neighbor policy to St. James. They are involved and caring partners in our community, our community, and their development can only benefit us and the entire surrounding community. St. James has waited a very long time for such a neighbor who can help turn our dreams of a charming town with art galleries and restaurants and ice cream parlor and boutique shops, a place where we and visitors can once again stroll down an avenue with things to see and do, and where our rich heritage in the arts can be celebrated. I speak for my organization and the countless others who have reached out to me, who live and work in St. James. Gyrodyne has done their due diligence. You have heard the facts tonight: not distortions, not exaggerations. The development of that property will only enhance us and will allow us to grow, not into a monster city, but become the microcosm of small-town life we yearn to be again and for which we almost lost hope. Please let us be good neighbors and endorse the progress that means so much to St. James and truly all of our communities. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Weis. I live at Dale Road, Stony Brook. My husband has a business in the Gyrodyne Industrial Park, so I'm straddling both sides of the line. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard this evening. Some of Long Island's most beautiful places are right here in the town of Smithtown. A few years ago, as part of a club that I belong to, Antique Cars, I was in charge of putting together a rally. My first thought was, along the water, North Shore, Smithtown. I brought the cars through Nissiquag, I brought the cars through Head of the Harbor, Stony Brook, Oldfield, and we settled back at, pardon me, cold, the Deep Wells Estate. It was fabulous. Many good things I heard. Everyone thinks of Long Island, they think of Levittown and congestion and whatnot. So, almost 100 years ago, development was also threatening to change St. James. South of 25A was developing at such a rapid pace that they referred to it as Boomer Town. Some community members foresaw that this would cause irreversible damage. So, as stewards of the land, they realized whatever they allowed to happen would become their legacy. At that point in time, Nissiquag and Head of the Harbor Incorporated. Each area developed stringent zoning codes to preserve older homes, maintain a pleasing aesthetic, and country setting. They did that, but they didn't stop progress. Today, we're at a crossroads. Our population has increased, more homes are built, and what was supposed to be a small teachers' college morphed into an internationally-recognized state university. The university seized Gyrodyne property by eminent domain in order to build more, yet has given no consideration to its impact on the surrounding area. I ask that Gyrodyne please be a good neighbor in their quest to create a project with synergy and connectivity to Stony Brook University. St. James and Stony Brook residents contend with roads which are overburdened. Traffic grows worse with each new commercial building erected and with each home illegally converted into multiple-family dwellings and student-boarding houses by absentee landlords. Traffic on historic 25A Corridor and Stony Brook Road has increased substantially without this project. The projected full scope of the proposed project will add more vehicles to the already overburdened local roads. The DEIS suggested fewer than 500 external trips during any peak hour. That's eight vehicles per minute, one vehicle every 7.5 seconds, give or take. Peak traffic currently creeps along 25A. The proposed solution to add traffic lights at Mills Pond Road and either a traffic light or roundabout at Stony Brook Road will not alleviate congestion brought about by this project. The intersection of Mills Pond and 25A is targeted for traffic light and turn lanes. This is needed. Since there's a plan for traffic control at that intersection, why not shift the entrance to the project, to Mills Pond Road, to help create a smoother traffic flow along that stretch of 25A, rather than break it up by putting this in the middle after a traffic light, before the next traffic light, and then the side roads which come in? What also can be done to try and keep some of this traffic off of Stony Brook Road? How can you go about encouraging the use of Mills Pond Road and Mariches Road as an access between Gyrodyne property and Route 347? There are more commercial properties and fewer private homes with driveways on these two roads other than on Stony Brook Road. Also, what in the surrounding environment will be done to control the flooding issue at the corner of Mills Pond Road and 25A? The pond floods after substantial rainfall, and there have been times when the flooding covers a large percentage of Mills Pond Road. This does also add to the traffic problem. Then, I know the DEIS has looked into pollutants onsite and what have you. Going back to the historical uses of the property... Going back to the historical uses of the property, one of the former owners of the property, it says what I wrote rather, I'm a little nervous, apologize, says, "Given that the property was once used for manufacturing at a time when contaminated waste was dumped into bodies of water or buried in onsite pits, what assurances do we have that the pond bottoms and soil below or along the immediate surrounding areas were thoroughly tested for contaminants or toxins outside of the legacy toxins and the soil associated with past horticultural use?" Have those ponds been tested? The, one of the previous owners was a company named Bendix, so when I Google Bendix, they come up with a Superfund site in another state. And they, in that other state, they were dumping toxins into a pond. The DEIS states that the applicant intends to sell one or more parcels such that future buyers would undertake any future redevelopment applications. So if that is the case, what covenants can be put into place today to prevent a future developer from buying an open lot and proposing high-density housing development on it? If the sewage is there, I think we do need to concern ourselves with that if these lots are going to be sold off and somebody else is going to approach you in the future. Without judicious planning, this project will forever change the historic Washington Spy Trail. Smithtown can, pardon me, Smithtown can direct the applicant in their project planning in a way which will preserve the corridor's peccolic appearance. What you allow to happen will be your legacy. Thank you for hearing me today.
Good evening. Lynn Gomberd, fifteen Great Oak Road, St. James. I am no fluent speaker like these people. I got a little scrappy paper here.
That's good.
But I know you'll throw me out. But this corridor that you're talking about, this trail and everything else, did the state of New York, when they took the two hundred and seventy-five acres and built those three enormous buildings in there, did they worry about that? Did Brookhaven Town say, "Hey, what the heck are you doing to me?" I don't know. I wasn't interested then, but I'm interested now. The buildings, I went in there today just to see. Well, I'm gonna tell you, if you've never been in there, do yourself a favor and drive in and see the size of the buildings the state of New York put in there for, I know it's a good purpose and all this future scientific stuff and everything else, but wow. I'll bet you, in the one building alone, there was at least one hundred cars in the parking lot. Yeah, I'm not kidding you. Take a ride over there, you'll see during the day.
Please address the board.
I'm sorry. But you'll see. It's crazy. The other thing is, and everybody has concerns about traffic, and I do too. I live out here, been here over fifty years. But in the same token, does anybody care from Brookhaven who comes down Edgewood Avenue all the time to go home and go to work and see that congestion on the St. James-Smithtown roads? I think we're going up, barking up the wrong tree, to tell you the truth. Let's move forward and go with what's gonna become, the man is allowed to do this stuff, and I don't care if it comes from nineteen ten or whatever the law was. He's entitled to do it. I personally believe that St. James needs this project to stabilize taxes, number one. We have no tax base with industry. This could help us. Number two, with the town working with the owner, maybe we can use their sewer thing, and we're gonna put in five thousand dollars' worth of sewers this summer in town, right through the middle of St. James, to help it grow a little bit. I think the town should embrace this proposal and go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Turner, and I serve as Conservation Chair of the Four Harbors Audubon Society, and it's a pleasure to speak before the Smithtown Planning Board. I don't think I've had that opportunity. Also, to do a shout-out to David Barnes, who up until recently was a colleague of mine working in the town of Brookhaven, working on land use matters. We're gonna be providing much more extensive comments, written comments, before the deadline, so I'm not going to really go into great detail now, but I want to do something a little bit unusual, and that is actually focus on the EIS and to just provide a few comments, concerns that the organization has. To make it clear to you, Four Harbors Audubon is involved because we are a chapter of the National Audubon Society, and our charter area consists of the town of Smithtown and the western, northwestern part of the town of Brookhaven, basically above the Long Island Expressway east of the Riverhead Line. So that's the area that we have concern about, and of course, this project is situated pretty much smack in the middle of that. Two, I have two primary concerns about the EIS. One really relates to a full lack of alternatives that we would hope that you would consider asking for some supplemental information on, and the other is just some undisclosed adverse impacts we think that should also be addressed. With regard to the alternatives, Supervisor Romain touched upon them a little bit. From my reading of the EIS, all the alternatives are just kind of shuffling around different uses within each of these jigsaw puzzle pieces that are sitting in place. It's really vital that you think about shifting the projects around on the landscape to try to maximize open space. So you have those nine lots, but in the, every alternative discussion, those nine-lot lines, the boundaries are frozen. I started doing that and shifted things around a bit and was able to, I don't have it with me here, but I'll provide the comments to you, able to come up with maximizing more open space, making contiguous, and open space that is more meaningful. So that's, with regard to the alternative section, I think that it's really important that you not just look at alternatives of uses in each of the lots, but actually shift lots around. Maybe you can do a cluster. In the town of Brookhaven, where I work, I used to be Director of DEP for the town for a long time, we've actually done some industrial clusters. There's no reason why you can't do it. We typically think of cluster development for open-space preservation when it comes to residential uses, but you can certainly do it with industrial, and we'd encourage you to give some thought about that as doing an alternative with that regard. Also, wanna support what Joyce Regliano said about shifting the sewage treatment plant. It is within, right now, it looks like it's within the ten-to-twenty-five-year groundwater contributing area at the Stony Brook Harbor, which I believe the EIS indicates makes it inconsistent with the new sub-water shed plan that Suffolk County is in the process of developing and is vetting right now publicly. We think that it makes sense to think about maybe looking to put that SDP in a way that will reduce potential impacts to the harbor. Maybe you move it to the twenty-five to fifty-year groundwater contributing area. That buys us, buys us some time. That leads me to the other concerns we have, and that has to do with a better assessment about some of the impacts. Again, as Joy mentioned to you, the EIS talks about calculations, nitrogen loading calculations to Stony Brook Harbor that suggest that it'll increase by about four percent. That sounds like it's minor. If I say we gain four percent eating over the holidays, think, well, maybe that's not that big a deal. Four percent doesn't sound like a lot. Four percent can be, from an ecological perspective, catastrophic. And I've seen the audience, we've got Dr. Larry Swanson here who can speak more to this about the tipping points in estuarine systems, but you add four percent more nitrogen at the Stony Brook Harbor, what could be the impacts? They're not just necessarily linear, where you might just have a little bit more of an impact. And we'd strongly encourage you and ask that you assess in the EIS specifically what that four percent increase might mean ecologically to the estuarine system of Stony Brook Harbor. Last thing I'll say has to do with, again, something that Joy brought up, and that is window bird collisions. We know, and it's something that's unassessed in the EIS, we know that one of the major wildlife impacts of development is birds flying into windows. It's been getting a lot of attention nationally, you may be aware of it. We know that upwards of a billion birds a year die in the United States flying into windows of commercial buildings, residential buildings. It makes it the second-largest cause of mortality behind cat predation. It is something that we like to work on. It is not something that's discussed in the EIS, nor is the idea of incorporating bird-friendly building design into the buildings and the windows assessed. We think it really should be because the nature of the buildings that are proposed here, we're not just talking about homes with rather small, you know, windows, we're talking about a campus setting with, presumably with the facilities that have fairly large windows that could pose a problem, so we'd ask that that be incorporated as well. Again, we'll be providing comments to you, and I appreciate the opportunity to share some initial thoughts to you, okay?
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Herb Monas. I live at thirty-seven Quaker Path in Stony Brook. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Three Village Civic Association and its affiliate associations, the Stony Brook Civic Association, the Civic Association of the Satakets, and the Civic Association of the Satakets in Stony Brook. I have served on the Three Village Civic Association's Board of Directors for nearly thirty years, and am a past President of the Association. I am now the Land Use Chairman of our association, and after three decades of civic engagement, I am well-versed in planning issues and draft impact statements. On a personal note, and as a local resident and a frequent visitor to St. James and Smithtown, I am deeply committed to preserving, protecting, and enhancing our shared historic North Shore. It is a remarkable beauty. It is the remarkable beauty and the historic setting of this area that is both a blessing and a curse. It's a blessing in making residents deeply proud of their homes in our colonial heritage, but it's a curse in that we need to fend off continually high-density, maximum-profit projects that see this area only as an area to exploit. Yes, our communities are constantly subject to some change, especially in an area as attractive and desirable as ours, but hopefully, these changes fit the area and the unique character of our community. The Gyrodyne Project is the first step in a pivotal, high-density, multi-land division that is the epicenter of a new expansive corporate buildout slated for this area. In a very real sense, Gyrodyne's project is a template, the model for a new North Shore, complete with office parks, hotels, and assisted living facilities. And with that in mind, the Gyrodyne Corporation, the Smithtown Planning Board, has an obligation to its residents to give a hard, careful examination of any buildout of the properties under review and other properties subject to future buildout. And they cannot, under the rules and standards of a draft impact statement, be myopic and superficial. To that end, the environmental impact statement needs to weigh all future potential developments of surrounding properties. One, to the immediate east, the buildout of the Stony Brook Wireless Research Park, which sits on former Gyrodyne property. This buildout may very likely add eight buildings in the near future. To the immediate east, Bull Run Farm, potentially an assisted living center. Three, to the immediate northeast, the International Baptist Church, contract vending now proposing a hundred to a hundred and twenty senior living resort. And to the immediate north, BB and GG Farm land, future unknown. The important point here is that any evaluation, assessment, review of the Gyrodyne property cannot take place in isolation, not in a vacuum. It cannot ignore what is happening in the surrounding communities and neighborhoods and properties. Put it in another way, knowing the proposed buildout of the Gyrodyne property and knowing the potential buildout of the surrounding properties to the east, west, north, and south, it is not credible to think that the Smithtown and Brookhaven neighborhoods on the North Shore will not experience severe and lasting negative changes. Of the many adverse impacts, which have been spoken to by many of the other speakers, is the impact on the North Shore Heritage Trail, Washington's Spy Trail. It was thirty years ago that the New York State DOT proposed four-leaning Route twenty-five A in our community. It was only the civic engagement that voiced such objections that turned that back. Thirty years ago, the traffic in this community paled in comparison to what it is today and is nothing like what it can be tomorrow. That has to be considered. Lastly, let me say this. I say this with no malice, with love of the Smithtown community and the Smithtown Board and Smithtown Planning, but I am aware that there is a Planning Board member that needed to recuse themselves from the hearing today due to a conflict. This recusal only seemingly occurred when confronted by press reports. It appears that the Smithtown Planning Board process leading to this hearing has been tainted by one member that was part of every decision that brings us to this point. It would be now appropriate for the Town Board and the Planning Board to reexamine the application, not only because of everything that's discussed tonight, but knowing how this application advanced to this particular point. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is George Hoffman, and I live in Satakit, and I'm the co-chair of the Town of Brookhaven's Twenty-five A Corridor Citizens Advisory Committee. I also served as Chief of Staff in several of the towns on Long Island, the town of Huntington, the town of Islip, and the town of Brookhaven, and I've been involved in many major planning initiatives. I'm here tonight to point out some, I'm sorry?
Your address.
Oh, my address is one forty-three Main Street in Satakit. I did say I was a Satakit resident. I'm here tonight to point out some of the deficiencies, as I see it, in the draft EIS for Gyrodyne. My major concern tonight is that the DEIS fails to take a hard look at significant impacts of the proposed buildout of the seventy-five-acre parcel. There is no, there was no interminable review. Given that the property is directly adjacent to the border of two towns and one incorporated village, this is a significant failure of this DEIS. It fails to consider significant development being proposed directly adjacent to the Gyrodyne property that hasn't been looked at in the DEIS. We have heard that mentioned tonight, the eighteen-acre Bible School that will be potentially a hundred and eighteen, fifty-five and older house, housing, the Bull Run Farm, which we hear now will become an assisted living, which is directly across the street from the Flower Fields entrance, and of course, BB and GG Farm. Right now, the county is looking at it for potential acquisition, and what happens to the Gyrodyne properties will impact our ability to be able to purchase that. To do a DEIS in isolation of these proposed developments is classic segmentation, and it's a failure of this DEIS. As co-chairman of the Town of Brookhaven's Twenty-five A Citizens Advisory Committee, I worked with two dozen community residents and spent two years studying the development patterns on Route twenty-five A and compiled a visioning report that was adopted by the Town Board in two thousand and eighteen. The recommendation of that two-year study was to preserve and protect the rural and small-town character of the historic twenty-five A corridor by limiting development, by standardizing the signage along the way, and improving pedestrian safety on Route twenty-five A. This proposed project will have a direct impact on those goals and is being proposed without any consideration of adjacent impacts and regional planning. There are other omissions that need to be addressed, the importance of maintaining and preserving a shared historic corridor. We've heard that it's the George Washington Spy Trail. Our president in seventeen ninety actually traveled that road when he visited Long Island, and to see it squandered into a commercial development on the road just makes no sense to us. The impacts of the development on Head of the Harbor, nothing in the EIS talks about cut-through traffic when people find they can't, you know, traverse twenty-five A anymore. And finally, the impacts to the significant agriculture and park lands located on the same twenty-five A corridor. Finally, the DEIS fails to take a hard look at the impacts associated with building a regional sewage treatment facility on the Stony Brook Harbor, one of the most threatened inland harbors on the North Shore. The buildout plan being proposed in this plan is not environmentally sound or creative. It's a throwback to land use in the nineteen sixties, and hopefully, the Smithtown Plan It's a throwback to land use in the 1960s, and hopefully the Smithtown Planning Board will force the developer to go back to the planning boards and start over. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, we're going to take a short break now. The synographer has to regroup, and we'll probably take a break for probably about ten minutes, and thank you very much.
My name is Christopher McNamara, Seventeen Doring Lane, Comac, New York. I want to thank the Smithtown Planning Board on the opportunity to speak. I'm a lifelong resident of Smithtown, for the most part excluding my time in the U.S. Air Force. I am also currently the president of the Smithtown Chamber of Commerce. We're in economic development, as well as the sewage treatment plants we're for. Smithtown hamlets, they need this. I mean, you have Kings Park, Smithtown, we both got grants, about twenty million dollars. In Smithtown, it costs seventy million dollars just to put our sewer treatment in that we need. If St. James is able to capitalize on this with what goes on, more power to them, and I'm happy for them. It's better for the environment. The aquifers are having severe problems. We all live, you know, we don't have sewers, and it's a severe problem, and it's just getting worse. Besides what the project's going to do, they're going to provide fifteen hundred construction jobs, they're going to provide over a thousand permanent jobs. It's a huge tax base for Smithtown. Young and old people, many people I know went to school with, parents, as well as siblings, are moving out of the state or have moved out of the state due to the fact of the cost base of taxes here. The majority of the land is not developed, and the due diligence has been done. We, as the Smithtown Chamber, hope you will vote yes on this matter, and I won't take up any more of your time because I know it's getting late. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, the planning board, for letting us all speak. My name is Carol Ann Wolf. I live on Mills Pond Road in St. James. I've lived there since 1980. Before that, I lived on Cambon Avenue. My aunt lived up in Stony Brook, right in the middle of the historic district. I am part of the Stony Brook Yacht Club. I help seed clam, the Stony Brook Yacht Club, and seed oyster, the Stony Brook Yacht Club. My concern, yes, of course, I'm concerned about the wildlife, and I'm concerned about the congestion on the roads. It's going to be horrible, but my biggest concern is Smithtown Bay, St. James Bay, and Stony Brook Harbor. Gyrodyne, that site, has been contaminated for decades. It's been contaminated since the 20s. It has never been a potato farm. This area, when you dig up that earth, is going to immediately contaminate our ponds, our brooks, and our waterways. It's going to kill the shellfish. It's going to contaminate the fish to the point where you're not going to want to use There's even possibility of nuclear material there, and I'm saying this because in the 80s, I saw munitions being brought out of there. I saw missiles under tarps being taken out in the wee hours of the morning. That came out of Gyrodyne. Maybe they were going out to the Rocky Point Missile Site. I don't know where they were going, but they came out of there. We don't know what's in that soil, but when you turn it over, all of that contamination is going to go right into our waterways. If you enjoy boating, fishing, clamming, if you enjoy swimming, you're going to be swimming in the Hudson River. I don't understand why this project is necessary, but I do understand that it's going to destroy the area that we live in, and I'm very, very unhappy with it. Just letting you know. Thank you.
My name is Valerie Cartwright. I'm a councilwoman for the Town of Brookhaven, representing Council District One, which encompasses the Stony Brook and Sotoket area. My address is 9 Hancock Street, Port Jefferson Station, New York, 11776. First, I'd like to again say good evening to the planning board members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I echo the sentiments of our town board supervisor, Ed Romaine. His comments were detailed, comprehensive, and spot-on, so I will try to keep my comments fairly brief. As the Brookhaven Town Council District Representative of Council District One, I had to come here tonight to convey my deep concern about this proposal. I too have previously submitted comments on this to the board throughout this years-long process for this application. I have voiced my concerns and those of the neighboring residents in Brookhaven's Council District One who will be directly affected by any development at the Gyrodyne site. I am here today to reinforce these concerns. As you are aware, as the co-chair of my 25A Visioning Committee, George Hoffman, has previously spoken, the town recently completed a corridor study of Route 25A from the Smithtown line to the Polquatt Village Line. Among the many topics that were considered, traffic was a major and consistent concern. This project will greatly magnify this problem. Additionally, as evidenced by our corridor study, the surrounding residents are staunchly opposed to road widening to reduce traffic congestion. Many feel that the growth of Stony Brook University, though positive in many ways, has changed and shifted the rural character of the adjacent communities. Adding additional high-density and traffic generating projects would increase the major changes to our community. The DIS that has been submitted does not properly address this concern. I have spoken to many of my colleagues that represent this area, some of which have submitted letters this evening and some that have been represented here today regarding the infrastructure needed to support such a project, specifically the potential of a regional STP that will discharge into our groundwater. I too share these concerns, particularly considering the sensitive nature of Stony Brook Harbor and the recent Suffolk County subwatershed plan that indicates sanitary wastewater from the site will absolutely affect the harbor. Should there be any approval on this application, the proposed development, as laid out in the DEIS, should be significantly reduced in density to avoid negative impacts to Stony Brook Harbor. The DEIS does not appropriately address this issue, but rather gives variations and iterations of the same project. That was stated by Supervisor Romaine. Furthermore, most of the potential uses of the site, as stated in the DEIS, are unnecessary to support the surrounding community and will serve only to add traffic impact to overburdened roadways. My constituents in Stony Brook and the immediately surrounding area would be significantly affected by the development of the proposed application. The neighboring community I represent is already saturated with infrastructure concerns surrounding Stony Brook University. The university, however, offers numerous positive community benefits, academic, scientific, economic, that helps mitigate these impacts to some degree. However, none of the proposed project ideas that have been put in the DIS would offer the same benefits to our community and have the very real potential to irreparably harm the community. To be clear, the Town of Brookhaven is not completely opposed to growth. However, we strive for strategic, controlled growth. A potential alternate option for a significant portion of the Gyrodyne property, which would benefit both Smithtown and Brookhaven Town, is public acquisition for preservation as open space. This option would alleviate these community concerns. I am supportive of preserving the Gyrodyne property as open space, and I urge that this alternative option be taken into real consideration. I am well-aware of the county's efforts to move in this direction, however, there has been no cooperation from the owners. Additionally, I would like to note our disappointment at the lack of communication with the town about this application. As a neighboring municipality that would be directly and immediately impacted by such a project, we would have expected a response to the town's previously expressed concerns. As I mentioned, the DEIS proposes direct impacts on our Brookhaven residents, not the least of which are changes to the infrastructure of roads within the Town of Brookhaven, and there has been no collaboration. Rather than to continue to reiterate in detail more of the same points made by my supervisor, I will close by mentioning that our board, your board, should expect extensive detailed comment on the DEIS from our Brookhaven Town Planning Department before the conclusion of the written comment period on January 24th. I again state my objection to the proposed project and any of the currently proposed forms on the record, and I truly hope that you take a hard look at all of the credible comments that have been put forth before you today by the community and various elected officials, and say thank you again for giving me this time. Have a great evening.
My name is Alyssa Torano. I am the chief of staff for Suffolk County legislator Kara Hahn. The legislator was unable to make it this evening, so she asked me to come here to read the following statement on her behalf. "The Gyrodyne LLC property on which this application has been made is bounded by a historic corridor comprised of the North Country Road, New York State Route 25A Heritage Trail, and Mills Pond Road. These narrow, winding, two-lane roads have not been engineered for the inevitable influx of vehicles that will emanate from this site upon the completion and, in fact, are currently at or nearing capacity from the residential, commercial, and economic centers they already serve. While the project's potential traffic consequences alone are of great concern, the environmental impacts are equally profound. In its current design, the Gyrodyne development provides no consideration of stormwater runoff from the proposed project's impervious surfaces along the Route 25A corridor. Nearby woodlands, wetlands, Mills Pond, Stony Brook Harbor, and the Long Island Sound could be exposed to contaminant runoff. Just as concerning is the proposed onsite sewer treatment facility designed to discharge into groundwater. In as little as ten years from now, sewage effluent will infiltrate into and pollute the surface waters of Stony Brook Harbor. For more than a generation, we, as a region, have been fighting to protect the natural ecological function of the Long Island Sound and its abatements. If approved, and especially if expanded later into a regional sewer, this facility will confound these efforts. Because it will be constructed much too close to important educational, historical, and cultural sites, the Gyrodyne project will diminish the character, livability, and property values now associated with the residential homes that are near the proposed location." The draft environmental impact statement is incomplete in its current form, and it must answer certain fundamental questions about this project, including its impact on local watersheds of significance, the Long Island Sound, and its impact on our area's limited transportation network. It must also contain a detailed assessment of impacts it would have to neighboring municipalities. "The Gyrodyne property is one of the largest undeveloped tracts remaining in western Suffolk. This project, if built, will fundamentally change the character of this community through increased traffic, a deteriorated environment, and a diminished quality of life. For all of these reasons, I have grave concerns on the size and the scope of this project. I urge you on behalf of the residents living in both the Town of Smithtown and Town of Brookhaven to postpone any further consideration of this project unless and until the applicant submits an analysis that fully considers these concerns and addresses each in a more thorough and comprehensive environmental impact statement. I also have a written copy to submit as well."
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Troy Rososko. I live at 19 Highland Avenue in Village of Head of the Harbor. I think I have a unique perspective on the 25A historical corridor. It happens that Highland Avenue intersects on 25A, as it does on the other end, Maritch's Road. I am in walking distance, within three minutes, of both the General Store, of Deepwells Farm, and of the St. James Episcopal Church. On my block, it's probably one of the most historic blocks in all of Head of the Harbor. I live in a circa 1895 home that was built by George Hodgkinson, and he was one of the builders of Box Hill, Stanford White's home. The home is also in the book Images of St. James and is known as the A.D. Carlisle Summer Home. He was a vaudeville performer and actually traveled the country with a dog and pony show, and I've got the barn in the back with the stalls. And so I, myself, am particularly interested in preserving the historic 25A corridor. In addition to my block being one of the most historic blocks in Head of the Harbor, a couple of years ago, you probably know that there was a threat to the closure and the sale of the historic St. James Fire Department building on 25A. It was my honor, along with many other St. James residents, to fight that sale and preserve that historic firehouse, and thankfully, we were successful, and that's right on 25A. So please understand, if I thought for one minute that the Gyrodyne development was going to have a severe impact on the 25A historic cultural aesthetic, I would oppose that, and not only would I oppose it, I would mobilize the same forces and the same people who fought to preserve the historic firehouse to see that this development would fail. However, I'm not here to argue against the Gyrodyne development. Instead, I'm here to argue that it should be developed as proposed. I have investigated this, as I have many other developments along 25A, okay, and the potential for development along 25A. I moved here into the Village of Head of the Harbor because I loved the historic rural nature of it. I don't want to see that threatened at all, but I do know that there will be a substantial, as indicated in the program before, buffer on 25A. I believe it's at a minimum two hundred feet with new plantings that will protect the aesthetic, cultural, rural nature of 25A. And certainly, I, as a resident of Village of the Head of the Harbor, want to protect that. Our village covers a good distance of that. So I simply am here today to solely comment on the historical impacts of this development, no other issues regarding this development, but to ask you to strongly consider supporting this development proposal by Gyrodyne. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Warren Strugatch, and I'm publisher of Select Long Island, an economic development publication. And prior to that, I've been a business journalist on Long Island, covering and profiling figures in business, in economics, and in economic development for many years. And that has, I believe, given me a perspective on what true economic development actually is. And I have to say, I really see little to none of it in the project that we're here to discuss today. There's very little of it in terms of what the traditional and contemporary requirements of economic development are. Looking at -- planning is a big part of it. I think the comments from the leaders across the border, and it almost sounds like there's the kind of wall that's been put up. And it's unfortunate because the whole purpose of planning, planning is at the essence of economic development. If planners aren't talking to other planners, if planners aren't talking to economic leaders, if the people who create the programs and the projects and design them and plan them are not talking to their counterparts across the border, then there is no planning going on. It doesn't exist. It's phantasmagorical. Earlier today, in order to try to get a sense of what economic benefits might be, and to question what I've heard from many people, which is that maybe the environmental issues may be questionable, but there's going to be economic growth. We're going to create a thousand jobs. I've heard that bandied about. And I look, and possibly that's so, but I looked into what those jobs are going to be, and anybody in this room who has a connection to the internet can do the same thing I did. You can find these statistics on the U.S. Labor Department and in the Census Bureau, and they're all freshly cooked today. I just found them this morning. For example, in terms of looking at the occupational wage-earning profiles, what the jobs that are going to be based on the the jobs that are going to be, based on the industries that are going to be in this project, it's not a pretty picture. We're looking at hotel, we're looking at nursing homes, and we're looking at medical These are industries that hire predominantly in the lowest third of occupations as ranked by wages, again, according to the U.S. Labor Department. Let's start with the proposed hotel. Hotels hire predominantly housekeepers, desk clerks, porters, security people, maintenance people. Hotel and motel employees last year earned just over $27,000. These are median annual earnings. They were the 17th lowest wage earners in the United States. Maids and housekeepers came in just over $24,000. They ranked seventh lowest. Food prep workers, dining room attendants, food service workers earn between $23,000 and $24,000. I repeat, $23,000 and $24,000. They held the second lowest ranked salary jobs in the economy, okay? Everybody remembers Letterman's Top 10 list. Who do you think is the lowest ranked in the United States by occupation? It's laundry workers. They earn $22,500. Let's take a quick look at the Nursing Home Assisted Living Center. Nursing and health aides earned just under $27,000 last year. They ranked 16th lowest. Situation is a little brighter over in the medical offices. Doctors do well. My mother would say they're comfortable. They earned a median salary of just under $300,000 last year, and this is national. Locally, on Long Island, it's a little higher, but Long Island wages have not kept pace with the growth around the country. We earn pretty close to what we earned 10 years ago. Most of the country has gone higher. We've lagged that growth occupationally. Most people who work at medical offices, though, are not doctors. It's about maybe 1 out of 10 employees of a typical healthcare facility are doctors. Nursing and health aides last year earned less than $27,000. That's not a tenth of what physicians earn. The average medical records clerk salary in the United States is $35,000. Over at the sewage treatment plant, uncomfortably near all of these, the average salary there, assuming that the plant is run by a private operator, governments pay more, will be about $46,000. Let's stop for a moment and compare that to what it takes to live in Smithtown. Median household income in Smithtown last year was $126,000, and that's about double the amount of the national median wage, about double. And this is coming from the Census Bureau. I don't make it up. Keep in mind that if you're a family of four and you're earning $81,000 a year here, you qualify for public benefits. That's $81,000. So, most of those jobs that we're talking about here would require two people, and they still would be on public benefits. So, to summarize my research, it appears that most of the jobs that would be created on this site will be low-income jobs, among the lowest on the books in the United States. Most of the jobs will not pay enough to keep a Smithtown household above the poverty line. I'd also say that the highest-paying jobs of the new jobs will probably represent jobs that are transferred from other locations fairly nearby, as distinct from jobs that will be created, meaning there'll be expansions, there will be companies that exist or operations that will expand and create a new program, and they'll transfer people here. They will not be literally creating new jobs, and that's an important distinction. Why is it important? Because if the person is now working in Comac, they may be offered the chance to take the job in Smithtown, and they very possibly will accept it. That will be called a new job. It will not genuinely be a new job. It will not have that economic impact. So, I've also heard it said that the project will bolster the community's tax rolls. I see that as highly unlikely, and that's based on recent experience. The reason, as everybody knows about the 2005 land grab, excuse me, eminent domain seizure of the university, Stony Brook acquired either 246 acres or 278 acres, it depends how you, I guess who you ask, of Gyrodyne. Since then, the university has constructed and continued to construct buildings for academic and research purposes, which we've discussed at length ad nauseam here today. The important thing to note is that on Brookhaven's experience, and if Ed Romayne was still here, I think he could attest to it, that's been a negative loss for Brookhaven. They took the property off the tax rolls. It was bought by a government entity, pays no taxes, but consumes public services, including emergency services. So, what we're saying is that the experience in Brookhaven, and by the way, I don't have to tell anybody in this room that this property is adjacent to the Stony Brook campus. Gyrodyne has not yet allowed who will be the definitively said who will be the customers of this property or who will be actually developing the property. If the planners know, maybe they can tell us. It would be interesting to hear, but the point is, is that they have already asked for an abatement so that this campus would be easily adjoinable and accessible to Stony Brook University. So, you can take a guess at who might be the ultimate customer for that lot. If Stony Brook buys it, it goes off the tax rolls, it is not going to be a tax, a tax positive gain for Smithtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, first off, I have a little bit of laryngitis. Thank God for microphones. My name is Michael Kaufman. I live on what is actually my driveway, River Hollow Lane in St. James. I've been here for about 40 years, so compared to Richard Smith, I'm a rookie. His family's been here for about 10 generations or so. First off, I just want to bring up one or two quick points and also identify myself a little bit more because of what I'm going to be talking about. I am going to actually try and focus on the EIS and talk about hard looks because that's my job at the county. I, among others, sit on the Council on Environmental Quality, and we run the EIS process for the county. We're in the middle of one right now called the Sub Watershed Management Plan, which is...